Seven o'clock, I'm gonna start our recording. And call this meeting to order. We'll begin with the approval of our agenda. Pretty short agenda, so really not too much to discuss there, but if I could get a motion in a second to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, Jill.
Thank you, Tracy. And I will second that. Is there any discussion or questions on anything? Hearing nothing, we will vote, and I'll begin with Melissa.
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Alright, under new business, number one, discuss February ninth, twenty twenty-one election. This is discussion. Mr. Bransway, are you up, or who is going to be discussing this?
Well, they introduce it, if that's okay, Jill, just to refresh your memory of the last November the twenty-third, you passed, the board passed a resolution to move forward with the the bond for the issuing bond for the new facility. And and that was passed at that time, and there was two questions to it, and so but we acknowledged afterwards, the next week or so, that there was some confusion around the two point five million originally allocated for the Bird Island site for the EDA. And with the transfer of the Bird Island Elementary School to them, and so there's some confusion there, and after hearing some, and also from some public members that we visited with, we thought it would be good to bring that back, and let's take a look at that resolution and what was adopted at that time, and then we put a, an option out, a revised resolution that that will address tonight, and then you can make that decision after you've had a chance to discuss with that, so. We've got Ryan Hoffman with us, and Mike Hoheisel, both consultants of ICICS, and then for Baird Financial. We have Mike with us, so I'm gonna turn it over to you, Ryan, working with the review and comment, and you can share some information with the board as far as looking at what we want to decide tonight.
Yeah, thanks, Dale. I guess first of all, I wanna, I wanna apologize to the board, because I do feel that on the twenty-third, that confusion was because I wasn't understanding there was confusion. I know that's, that's an odd way to put it, but it's, it's my job to make sure you're clear in what you're voting on, and everything inside of this referendum. So obviously, after the meeting, we kind of understood that there was some confusion, so I take that very seriously. That's, I want, I want to acknowledge that that I take things for granted sometimes with, with what I hear and how it goes, and some understandings. But that's, that's my bad there, to, to make sure you guys understand, that's my job, so. Want to say I'm sorry for that, and, and why we're doing this here tonight. But at the same time, I want to acknowledge tonight as being something that I haven't been part of before, which I think is amazing. This, this right here, what's happening, is the board coming together to, to understand what's happened in the past, and how to proceed in the future. That's exactly what the board is supposed to do. That's exactly the process. And I commend you guys for, for, first of all, realizing it, second of all, acknowledging it, third of all, putting it in place to to make sure that you get this right, because it's important. So I commend you for stepping up to this and, and wanting to work through it. So getting into where we are today, I want to also make something very clear. Nothing needs to change. The resolution that was voted on on November twenty-third is perfectly good. Everything that's been submitted in the review and comment meets that resolution, and as it sits, can carry through to February ninth. So we do not have to do anything. You, as a board, are choosing to have this discussion, and choosing to see maybe what you want to change here at this point. We're doing this now, because now is the time. We don't want to wait any further. We start to run into timeline implications with the, with the referendum, so. I want to make it clear that this is because we want to do this, not because we have to do this. The Department of Education is not making us do anything. The Bond Council is not making us do anything. This is because we want the board to be clear, and have their choice be heard amongst the public, that they're clear and ready to go forward with this referendum, so. That means the only discussion item we're talking about tonight is one point five million dollars. That's allocated currently in the referendum scope for furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, additional land purchase, and additional construction contingency, all related to the new building that'll be built near the hospital in Olivia. That one point five million dollars was originally part of the two point five million dollars allocated to go to the EDA of Bird Island. Because we know now, and what was trying to be portrayed on the twenty-third of November, that that two point five million dollars cannot go to the EDA, that is not legal to do. We're keeping a million dollars for the demolition of Bird Island Elementary School within the referendum. And then that subsequent million and a half we're deciding on what to do with. So currently, it is in with, within the referendum, but allocated to the new building. You all have the choice to say now, tonight, you know what, if it's not gonna go to the Bird Island EDA, let's reduce the overall impact of the entire referendum by a million and a half, and, and take that out of the, out of the scope of work. None of that million and a half was attributed to that new building in the planning up to November twenty-third, basically. So we are not losing anything. We're not hurting the new building in any way. We don't need that million and a half. It was just gonna give us some leeway in, in those three categories that I discussed. So you guys have the option to say, you know what, we want to bring this down, we want to, we want to keep this impact to our taxpayers as low and as fiscally responsible as possible, so let's take that out. That's what we're looking at tonight. So hopefully, that explains kind of where we're at, and I appreciate any questions or, or further dialogue on, on where to go from here. But that's the only thing we're looking at, is if the board would like to reduce the overall bond amount for question one by a million and a half dollars. Question two, we're not even talking about. That's staying the same. We're all good. Leave it alone. Who has the first question?
Any questions, or just part of the discussion, go ahead, and I think we've, we've had some good discussion with it, so we'll move on.
Brian, that one point five for allocated for furniture and land purchase, what kind of land purchase are you talking about?
Well, again, whatever we feel like is necessary. So we haven't, in the referendum scope outside of the one point five, so the original referendum scope for question one, we have enough money allocated for approximately eighteen acres. So this one point five million dollars can, can add, and you know, that eighteen acres is gonna be between three hundred and four hundred thousand dollars, probably. Depends on how good a negotiating the, the district can do with, with the landowner. So out of one point five, to get another eighteen acres, you could probably consider the same amount. Maybe you, you'd actually be buying down with negotiating power with, with purchasing that many acres. But that's potential, so I would, I would think about three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars of that one point five would get you some more land. An additional eighteen acres, so you'd have thirty-six purchased, plus the fifteen that the building sits on, which is a pretty substantial site. But that's not, that's not, there isn't a, a set amount figured there, Jeff. It's, it's a budget.
Okay, so you're saying that eighteen acres is already allocated?
We already have in the plan, outside of this one point five million dollars, and additional eighteen acres outside of the fifteen that the building's sitting on.
Oh, so you got a total of thirty-three acres in there?
Yep, already. Yep.
Ryan, I have a question. By reducing question one by one point five million, what maybe this is a question for Mike, how does that affect the tax impact that we had talked about?
Yeah, let Mike handle that.
It isn't, it isn't, what we did with the reduction of question with the reduction of the borrowing amount, we still were looking at your goal of a specific size home being under twenty bucks a month, so all we're doing is paying off debt a little faster. So we, we kept to that goal. We could certainly, I could certainly look at that and try to buy it down, but it's I think there's a difference of, if I look at if I look at that quickly, nineteen dollars and twelve cents versus nineteen dollars and sixty-three cents, folks.
Thank you.
So I, I didn't make a huge difference of the forty-five, the forty-five cents, but.
But realistically, if we don't need this, okay, when you, when you go to buy something, is it a need or a want? Okay, do we really, really need it, or do we just want this money to be sitting there so we can just spend it on whatever? I mean, I look at the taxpayers and think, why would we want to put any more on them right now? I mean, we can always do that later if we need to, but why? I mean, nineteen dollars, maybe to some people, isn't a lot, but when you look at, I mean, you, Dale, you've talked numerous times about how many kids are on free and reduced lunches here. Those families, nineteen dollars to them, it's a lot of money to us, or whoever, I guess, and the all of us that are deciding this, it might not be, but to that one person, might be a lot of money. So if we're just gonna do it to do it, I don't think that's fair to the taxpayers, but I guess it's not all about me, so.
I agree with you, Sandy. I do.
So I would, so I would, I think to put it in a little better perspective. Sandy, I hope you didn't take it that I was saying nineteen dollars a month and twenty dollars a month isn't expensive for any one person. To put it in a little bit better perspective, the overall payments would be about, that one point five million over the course of the loan will cost about two point two million dollars. Two point two million dollars structured is about forty-five cents a month.
Sandy, I, I agree with you, too. I think, I feel like if we don't need that one point five million in there, then why have it in there?
I don't fear, I don't feel like it's fair to the property tax people that we go, oh, well, if we can get this fifty-seven, let's just go for another million and a half, just because it looks like everybody's got money out there.
Right.
That's not the point of this. The point of this is to get a good school, reasonable school, for kids to get a good education, but not to try and go overboard. I mean, right now, the kids aren't even in school. I mean, we build a new school. How do we know they're even gonna use the thing?
They're gonna be there.
One, one, well, yes, I hope so, too, but what I'm saying is we have to be somehow realistic here and fair to the community. We are, this is not our checkbook. This is the community's checkbook, and I don't think it's fair that we just go out and put another million and a half, just because hey, we got this much, let's go for this much. I, to me, that, I, I don't like that. So that's my side.
And I'll just say, first of all, thank you, Dale, Ryan, and Mike, for all the extra time and effort you put into this. It's incredibly amount, a lot of work, and it is definitely not unnoticed, and appreciate that. And I think, you know, before, the intentions were there, and they were good with what we wanted to do, or hoping to do with the money, the extra one point five, and unfortunately, can't happen, and there was some confusion there. I feel very bad for that. Moving forward, I, Sandy, you're right. I, I think, you know, knowing what we know now, and how we understand it now, it's probably a very fiscally responsible decision to back off on that and lower the overall bond amount with all the information that we have as of today, so. Before, I thought the intentions were good, and unfortunately, can't happen, so. Moving forward, I think that it is a responsible decision to reduce.
Thank you, Melissa. Jamie, what do you think?
I agree. I, I mean, piggybacking off Melissa's, I apologize, too, because I was confused, but and I do feel bad about that, but I do think that if, you know, the intentions were to help out the, the EDA, and if we can't do that, then it doesn't make sense fiscally to, to have it in there.
Alright, so with that, does anybody else have anything to discuss or add?
What's your thoughts, Jill?
I agreed with your wife. I have agreed with everybody. I mean, I, you know, I feel like we're all really on the same page here. I mean, I you know, yeah, an extra one and a half million dollars would be good, but it's, it's like Sandy said, it's not my checkbook, and I wouldn't have a hundred, another one point five million dollars in there anyway, so. In my checkbook, not at all. So, I mean, you know, we have to, we have to be responsible. That's where we're on this board, and that's what we're being asked to do, so. I feel it would be very good to, to reduce this back to fifty-seven four.
And I want, I just want to add, too, that the real intent was that, wasn't added on to that for that reason, and so I think you're all, I think, are really coming together and being very thoughtful of, of everybody involved with the district, I think, is saying, you know, that wasn't the intent, so let's correct it, and let's move on, and and I don't know that it's any one person's fault. It's, it's just that this happened, and, and we're able to correct that move, and so, so I commend all of you for, for thinking of that, and really taking a step back and saying, well, let's correct it then, and let's move on, and I, I appreciate Ryan and Mike's input into this, because I I have a lot of respect for them, and, and I trust what they're telling us is, is correct, and so I thank you for all your, your comments. I think it's, it's very good to hear.
Thank you, Mike and Ryan, too. I appreciate everything you do. You know, you've done a lot of work on this, but you know, if we can't give it to Bird Island and do what we intentionally wanted to.
Yes.
It's just, I don't feel it's a good choice.
I agree with you, Sandy.
I do as well. Any other discussion before we move on to number two under new business? Alright, number two under new business is approved resolution from February ninth, twenty twenty-one election. So we're basically doing this resolution again, just changing that number from the fifty-nine, nine, right? Correct?
Yes.
Fifty-eight, nine.
Fifty-eight, nine.
Thank you. Yeah, see?
Thanks, Ryan.
You, fifty-seven, four. Ryan can stop me whenever he feels like he can be done reading, because it's rather long.
Just to, just before you start, the only thing that's, that's changed there, I believe, is paragraph one.
Yeah, two, paragraph two.
Paragraph two.
The second paragraph, yeah.
There you go.
Can I ask you a question before you start?
Yes.
Um, Ryan, can this, with this, or Dale, maybe either one of you, I don't care. This COVID thing, if we do what we say we want to have this in February ninth, and we're still in this COVID deal, how's that gonna work? Because right now, we can't be face to face. We, we've had problems throughout the country with mail-in votes. I don't know. I'm pretty leery about that. Plus, we won't have a lot of our representation around here this year at that time. We have a lot of snowbirds.
I think that'll be handled with the elections, just like the, the November election with the, I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of write-ins or not write-ins, but cast votes.
Really voting.
So I think it'll be handled like that, and I and I think we went through a recount with our, our November election, and it came back very supportive of what, of what our county did, and I think there's no reason that this one wouldn't be the same.
Well, and if that can be something that can be added to the website in terms of, you know, like, I know my parents are in Arizona, and they asked me how they can vote, and so if that's something that we can maybe put some steps in there, either on the Be Bold Step Up, or on our both, maybe our own website as well, just saying, here's, here's what you need to do, you know, to get, to get a ballot. That would probably be helpful for people, so you can, there would be in-person voting, if it's safe to do so in February. I'm assuming it will be.
And keep in mind, the reason we're doing this right at this moment is we are getting this question prepared so that absentee ballots are going to be available right around Christmas night, folks.
Yeah.
So in that I think a lot of people did request ballots, and they know about how to do it, and, and I'm sure the world will I'm sure the microsite and your website, in combination of that, we're, we're, we're real good at, and I'll say we're, Ryan Ryan's firmness, but now we'll work with when it comes to getting that information out, because that early that early vote and getting people knowledgeable about the vote is, is so part and parcel to the process. So Jeff, we're gonna do everything we can to make sure that everybody gets as much information as possible, and everybody gets opportunity to vote, no matter if they're sitting in your community, or vacationing, or, or being gone elsewhere.
And what, what are some of the arenas you're gonna do it in, like, just the website, or how, what's your thoughts there?
We'll do every arena that's available, so. Just before we, we established having this meeting tonight, the, the microsite, as we refer to it, so that's the, the Be Bold Step Up site that has all this information, which will have a voting section, which will explain all the different ways to vote, and also provide links to Secretary of State and all those good things that people can follow through if they want to, but we'll, we'll also blast social media, so the schools' Facebook and Twitter accounts will have pretty consistent messaging and, and how to vote, and where to vote, and when to vote, and safety protocols, and all those good things. We'll have newspaper articles. You know, obviously, there, there'll be internal communications with staff and, and parents as well, so we'll, we'll try to hit every angle we can. I mean, we want we want people to vote, that's for sure, so we'll do whatever we can, and, and if you guys, as we move throughout the process, are hearing things that the message isn't getting out, or, or people are confused, by all means, let us know. We, you know, we'll, we'll attack however we need to, to, to make sure people get the information they want, and they need, and in the time that they, they desire it. So, starting tomorrow, we're based on tonight's decision, the microsite is sitting there waiting to go, and it'll go live tomorrow. So all of a sudden, there'll be a lot of communication starting tomorrow about what's happening, and, and all the details within it. I think you'll hopefully be pleasantly surprised when you see tomorrow, the microsite, all the information that's on there, and the history that's come up to this point, and the plan and all that good stuff, the cost. Everything's included.
Well, I just hope we get a, we get a good, good mail-out and all that stuff, because I think it's pretty important at this stage of the game.
We are having Joy Print with the, the printers there, four thousand mail-in ballots, and there's only thirty-five hundred registered voters, so even if there's some, some screw-ups and some redos or whatever, if every voter wants to vote mail-in, we're prepared for that.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
I think if you watch the website tomorrow, I think you'll, there's gonna be a ton of information on there, and it's all good. And we haven't launched it yet, because we want to wait till the final decision was made, and because what we want on there is the accuracy of everything that's there, and, and you'll be a lot of information there, so go on it and, and take a look at it, and let us know what you think, and if things, questions aren't answered, let's, let us know about those questions, and but the, Ryan's company has really done an outstanding job with working with our, with our our website, and so we're looking forward to launching that tomorrow.
Okay. Also, the questions, can you, can you read them off to me again, how you got them, because there's kind of a little bit of a confusion, whether it's for one or for both, or if one's added on to the other one, or how it's separated?
What, what's going on?
Jill, let me, can I handle that question?
Thank you. Yes.
Go ahead, Mike.
So I'm going to read directly from the, I'm gonna read the direct ballot question for the first one, and this will be, I would say, Jill, to go back to your original question, if you read, if you read the resolution title and paragraph two, that will be more than adequate for the, for the res, for this vote. So Jeff, the first question states, school district ballot question one, approval of general obligation school building bonds, we're allowed to have ten words in the title of the ballot, so we have chosen something very generic. The question states, with a yes/no box to the left, it says, shall the school board of independent school district number two-five-three-four for an island, Olivia, Lake Lillian, in France, Minnesota, the school district in France, be authorized to issue general obligation school building bonds in amount not to exceed fifty-seven million four hundred thousand for finance, the cost of acquisition, betterment, and equipping of school sites and facilities, including, but not limited to, a new pre-K through twelve building, land purchase, a new auditorium, and the disposition of existing buildings and school sites.
The, the disposition means dismantling and all that, correct?
It gives you the ability to, to I would say it gives you the ability to do a number of things to get rid of that asset. It doesn't mean that you have to. It gives you the ability to do things and get rid of that asset.
And that is included in this fifty-seven million, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, okay.
And the second question, then, is, is generic, but it says, it's, it's, it's I shouldn't say generic. It has the, there are certain words that you described in the statute, that like acquisition and betterment. That's what I'm going to do. So if school district ballot question one is approved, shall the school board of, and I'll just say, be authorized to issue general obligations, school building bonds in amount not to exceed five million four hundred and ten thousand for costing acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities, including athletic and activities complex.
Okay, that would be added on to the fifty-seven. Is that clear in there? That's the part I want, if, if that's gotta be very clear in there.
Well, it, it's, it's question two, and it says, if it shall be approved, then it'll be, then it authorizes, I look at authorization as an addition. This is how the state law says we have to put it in there. And I think people will see that, and they think that the microsite will obviously tell people that, hey, if you only want to vote on question two, and question one doesn't pass, you don't get question two. It's contingent.
Okay, well, I, I think people need to understand that. How it's done is, I don't care, but they need to understand that it's on top of the fifty-seven point four.
And everything that we have, like on tax impact data, they, it, it has question one, question two, and the total. So they should be able to see it on the impacts, too.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure that's clear. So I appreciate that, Mike. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Alright, hearing nothing else, we are going to read just the part that has changed off this resolution, so I can save you from having to listen to me. So we need, I need a member to make a motion here. So Benson, Sandy Benson?
Yep.
Introduce the following resolution and move this adoption. Which motion was Introduce the following resolution and move this adoption. Which motion was seconded by a member?
Booked all.
Booked all. Resolution relating to the issuance of general obligation school building bonds and calling a special election thereon. Be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number 2534, Bird Island, Olivia, Lake Lillian, Minnesota, as follows. Number one, on November 23rd, 2020, the board adopted a resolution relating to the issuance of general obligation school building bonds and the calling of a special election thereon, the prior election resolution. After discussing the projects and the use of the bonds, the district now wishes to reduce the not to exceed aggregate amount of ballot question one as set forth herein. The intent of this resolution is solely to reduce the not to exceed aggregate amount of ballot question one as set forth herein and otherwise restates the prior election resolution in its entirety. Number two, the board has investigated the facts and does hereby find, determine and declare that it is not necessary and expedient to issue general obligation school building bonds of the school district in an aggregate amount not to exceed 57,400,000 to finance the cost of acquisition, betterment and equipping a school, of school sites and facilities, including but not limited to, a new pre-K 12 building, land purchase, a new auditorium and the disposition of existing buildings and school sites. The question on the approval of this issuance of bonds shall be school district ballot question number one, on the school district ballot at a special election be held to approve said authorization. So that, that is the only part that has changed. So is there any discussion? Does anybody like to discuss any of that before we vote?
Yeah. Mike, maybe you can answer this question. Does that 57.4 have to be stated or not?
Yes.
Yep, fine.
Because it's the all, on this type of referendum, it's the only indicator of what you're asking for. There's no, there's no tax rate or anything associated with this. Or annual payment or what have.
So is that resolution okay? Or does it have to be put on there?
No, the resolution states it. That it cannot, your new borrowing amount cannot exceed 57,400,000.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing nothing else, we will vote and begin with Tracy.
Hi. Hi.
Yeah.
Bye.
Sandy?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
And myself, I am an I. Motion carried.
Jamie did Sandy vote, were you?
I thought she said Sandy when she said it. I'm like, okay.
We're all going to, we're all going to, let's vote again. It'll be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Whereupon the resolution was declared duly passed and adopted. Thank you all very much. And with that, that is all we have tonight, folks. We're going to be back here next Monday. So for our regular board meeting. So I am going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Say it all.
Any discussion on that? There is no discussion on that. So we are going to vote. We'll begin with Jamie.
Jill, you're really distant. It's hard to hear you.
Jamie, sorry. Sorry. Do you want to vote on this on?
Hi.
Um, Jeff?
I suppose I'll vote yes.
Sandy?
Yep, yes.
Melissa?
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
And myself, I am an I. We adjourned at 7:34. Go forth and enjoy the rest of your evening, guys.
Thanks, Mike and Ryan for your, so thank you much.
Thank you.
Mike and Ryan.
Bye.